But the realtor made it. He made so, yeah, I agree with him.
I, um, I don't know about that.
Six percent.
Good call.
I'm not sure. I'm just trying to figure it out. I'm not running for election. I have no reason to do it. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. That's kind of what, that's what's keeping me kind of interested. I agree. I agree.
Okay, it is 6:00 PM. We will call the October 10th meeting of the Chippewa County Board to order. We stand for our Pledge of Allegiance in a moment. Silence.
for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call shows 20 supervisors present, zero absent.
I would say commotion to approve the agenda.
Later, so make some move with the agenda.
And a second.
One second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, press green to approve, red to disapprove. Okay, agenda is approved. Okay, members of the public wishing being heard, I'll have the clerk explain to you the procedure.
We will start with the members that signed up in room 302, and then we will move to the speakers from rooms 001 and 003. The speakers from 001 and 003 will need to come upstairs to 302 to speak. The chair will read several members first, like speaker one, two, and three, so you will know when you are going to speak. And you will be given five minutes.
Okay, up first will be Heather Martel, then Deb Snow, and then Dwayne Shrewbridge. So Heather? Get right up by the microphone.
My name is Heather Martel. A number of you, a number of you, a number of you know me either personally or professionally. I have been in Chippewa Falls for quite a while. I'm a city counselor and a community leader. I believe in leading by example. That's why I'm here today. It's fitting that we're having this meeting in October. It's Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I'm seeing a lot of men out there. Sexual harassment in the workplace is one of the key issues that brought me in tonight. A number of my constituents are very upset by the text messages that had been released, and rightly so. Just about every woman in this room has probably experienced sexual harassment in the workplace. I'm here because our community has basically turned on a very young woman who was sexually harassed by her superior in an at-will state. This is an at-will employment state. That means that an employer does not need to have a reason to fire you. That makes women even more likely to be fired if they don't smile and play ball. What happened here may not have been nudity. It may not have been the aggressive sexual harassment that we're used to, but it leads up to that. It starts small. It starts in grooming behaviors and patterns, and it gets worse. A story that's personal to me. I experienced sexual harassment in the workplace when I was about the same age as the complainant. As a result, I went to my employer, I went to the supervisor, the managing partner of the law firm. I was let go. I was a young, single mother, and I was fired because I was sexually harassed by the lawyer that I worked for. As a result, the next place that I got hired at, I let the sexual harassment get physical. I did not come forward and say to anyone, HR or supervisors or anyone, that I was sexually harassed, because I needed this job. This is an at-will employment state. I hope that you can take my experience and apply it to your daughters, your wives, your mothers, because we have all experienced it. It's a reality of women in the workplace. It's an unfortunate reality, and that's why I'm here today. Because it is not acceptable, as a community leader, leading by example, it is my privilege and opportunity and responsibility to come here today and say, that's not okay. In no uncertain terms is it okay for a superior, someone who is in charge of another person's employment, to go sniffing around a subordinate, asking for dates, sending inappropriate text There is a line here, there is right and wrong. The text messages have clearly shown that he is in the wrong. Sheriff Hakes has not denied the text messages. They're very, they speak for themselves. There is no context that this can be taken out of. It is what it is. And I want to thank each and every one of you on this board for standing up and saying that women in the workforce matter, that if we're going to back the blue, that means our female law enforcement too, whether they're officers in uniform or dispatch. We need to stand together and tell this complainant, tell women everywhere in our community that they matter. That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Deborah Snow is up next, Dwayne Shrewbridge, and then Brian Westray.
Hello, thank you for your time. I am Travis Hakes' aunt, and I've flown down from Alaska to support Travis. I'm here to speak to what I've read in the news regarding the racist comments. So I have not known Travis to be racist. I can't speak to the text messages that are, you know, all in the media. I'm fired, I don't live here, I don't, whoever filed the complaint, I'm not going to address it. Can't speak to is what they said was a racist comment in the media. I am Asian, I was not offended, and I have never known Travis to be racist or make racist comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Dwayne Shrewbridge is up, Brian Westray, and then Karen Lottz.
I'm Dwayne Shrewbridge, Blumer resident. First, I'm not here to speak for or against Travis. I am concerned about the procedures that were followed about this case. First introduced to it through the media and the statement by the board saying that Hakes basically in their eyes is guilty, and he needs to be removed. No charges were given, no information was given. There was a statement though in that, that they're going to follow Chapter 17 procedures to remove him, because whatever he did was so horrible, he needs to be removed. That is trial by media, not trial by law. So I went and looked at Chapter 17. Removals by this may only be made upon written, verified charges brought by a resident taxpayer of the government unit. I didn't know there was even any charges until several weeks after that, a couple weeks after that. So, and then also, most of the debate around has been around policy, personality, training issues. Those are not, according to this, relevant to a Chapter 17 removal. Only written, verified charges can be addressed. Next point, at which the officer shall have full opportunity to be heard, to present defense against the charges, personally and by counsel. Ten minutes, the meeting here in front of everybody, is not being able to fully defend yourself against the charges. And his counsel. Copy of the charges and written notice of the time and place of the hearing shall be given to the officer by the removing power. I have been told that that has not been given to him. I've been asking, and usually people say, well, that we can't say anything about that right now. We can't say anything that's, but if you can't say anything about the charges or what's going on, how come we're confessing guilt in public, saying he needs to be removed? So if I am wrong on that, I would love to see documentation on his serving of those charges to him. That'd be great. The officer may then have 10 days from service of the charges to file, remove a power to verify answer there too. He gets 10 days to answer. So before the media even got involved, before I even should have known about it, most of these things should have been taking place in the background. You don't bring charges to somebody in public, you shouldn't hear about charges against you from the media. Okay? There's proper procedures where America, where trial law matters. The last one is more subjective or debatable. And the council of the city, having a membership more than 20, in case of charges brought before it, may appoint a committee, not less than five of its members, to conduct the hearing, make investigation, and report the testimony and proceedings to it. Yes, the letter of the law says this board should have made the investigation. Spirit of the law, is it okay for them to hire somebody from their side of the state to come in and prosecute? That is debatable, and we can debate that. But the letter of law, so those are the main points of this chapter. They all have been floppily followed at best, ignored it most likely. So hopefully, this point forward, we can make some of these corrections and beat them up front. Thank you.
Okay, Brian Westray is up now, Karen Lottz, and then Dennis.
Brian? Thank you for letting me come and speak with you. I will admit, I do not live in this, in this county, and so for that, I apologize, but I've spent my entire life living in Eau Claire County, and I'm really interested in what happens here. I've spent the last 10 months in my job going to county board meetings, town board meetings, meeting with constituents, and I gotta say, first of all, I just, having had to go through airport security to come to a county board meeting and pass more law enforcement than I've seen since the last time the vice president was here, is a little over the top. I mean, talk about intimidating the citizens doing that. I'm not quite sure what we think we're debating here tonight, but that seems, I don't know who made that, that decision, but I think the citizens of Chippewa should ask that question. Setting that aside, I read the entire 87 pages, all the prose, all the texts, and I'll say, I'm a 45-year-old father of a daughter who's 16, kind of right there in that point, if she's figuring out who she is as an adult, a young adult. I am a husband to a wife, and the son of a mother and grandmother, couple of them. And I have, I'm married to the only woman I've ever kissed, all right? I read those text messages, and to suggest that they are overtly sexual is truly absurd. Potentially flirtatious, maybe, but overtly sexual, it's absurd. I mean, I had my wife, who is a grade school teacher, read it. I had my 80-year-old mother read it. Neither of them found anything overtly sexual in them of any sort. Setting that aside, it seems like the text thread is maybe the only thing you folks have some purview over, but the rest of that report essentially says there are people in the county who don't think Travis is doing his job right. And in three years, the people of this county will have an opportunity to either rehire him or not. If they wanted, they could choose to try and recall him if they thought it was so bad. But I'm telling you right now, as somebody who knocked on the same doors Travis did in this last election cycle, throughout the Chippewa County, the people that we met at the doors did not elect you, the county board, to remake their choice for them about who they want their sheriff to be. If he commits a crime, that's a different story. That's what Statute 17, which I also have read, all the addendums as well, that's what it's intended for. You got a sheriff or a DA who commits a crime and won't leave office, that's when you call the governor and you say, hey, Gov, we need you to get rid of this person. Incidentally, if you do that, Governor Evers, who last I checked, Chippewa County didn't vote for, gets to decide who your sheriff is going to be. Not you guys. He does. He could appoint anyone he wanted, including someone from Madison. It doesn't have to be a Chippewa resident, I don't think. The rest of that board, or the rest of that, that report talks about subordinates. She interviewed, I don't know, 20 of, you've got, what, 140 employees in the Chippewa Sheriff's Department, who don't think Travis, guess what? I employed 32 people, and I guarantee you, at least one of those people didn't think I was doing a good job. An employee not thinking their boss is doing a good job is not news, and is not even particularly relevant. The statutes are very clear about what a sheriff has to do in this state, and he's doing those things. Electing or hiring a deputy sheriff, or in this case, a chief deputy, an undersheriff or a chief deputy, is one of the things the sheriff does. And then if the sheriff lets the chief deputy do the job, that's their choice. Again, in three years, the people of Chippewa County are going to get a choice, whether or not to rehire Travis Hakes, or between now and then, they can choose to recall him if they'd like. But they did not elect you people to make the choice for them. If he commits a crime, fine, but he hasn't done that, not even close. So I really encourage you all, in good governance, let the people who elected him decide whether or not to keep him in his job. And then they get to decide whether or not to keep all of you in your jobs, I think, what is it, next year, same time. This state, we are very, very voter-centric. We, we almost always default to the voters. They make a choice, we then let them make another choice. We see it throughout all of election law in this state. We let the voters decide, and then they live with the decision they make. So I encourage you all to do that again in this case, because 87 pages of that report, written by an attorney from Madison, who I think by default wasn't going to like Travis Hakes just as a person, 87 pages of that report, there's nothing in there that's a fireable offense. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Karen Lottz, then Dennis Lottz, and Peggy Esslinger.
Hi, my name is Karen Lottz, and I am not a public speaker, but I'm here to show my support for our sheriff. Knowing Travis the way that I do, I'm kind of related to him, so. His humor is a little off-key sometimes, and I read every single text message that was in that report, and I laughed through half of them, just, just as whoever he was sending them to made smiley face emojis. And I'm also here on behalf of all of us that got stuck in the basement. They would say exactly the same thing that I just said. And we also want to know who approved to hire a lawyer from Madison to come up here and look into this witch hunt. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I don't believe Dennis will be up here. He's my husband.
Okay. All right. If Dennis would decide, you could still get him in. So we would then go to Peggy Esslinger, Frank Goodman, and then Blaine Cavaple. Okay, Peggy Esslinger? Do not see Peggy again. If she is on her way up, we will give her an opportunity to speak. I'm going to give a little time here, because if they're coming up from downstairs, they may be on their way. Are you coming up to speak, sir?
Yeah, I can.
Okay, what's your name?
William Cavaple.
Yes, okay, you're, you can come right up and speak.
Some of you people might know me from a few years ago. I got a problem with this, what we're doing here. Our former sheriff did a lot worse than this sheriff. Our former sheriff broke the law, county deputies broke the law, our county zoning broke the law, and here we are right now, worried about some of you sending text messages. That just ain't right. You know, I elected him. I want him to be sheriff. He helped me out when I was fighting the county. And what you guys did to me in the past was wrong. It cost me a million dollars to defend myself from a corrupt sheriff that was in office and corrupt officials in the courthouse. I think, I stand behind Sheriff Hakes, and I'm willing to work with him in the future to redeem and review my case, because I think he'd do a lot of good. I don't see nothing offensive in his text messages. I don't know how you people read them. I read them differently. Of course, I got a good sense of humor, till I get mad. And I don't see anything in there that would make me mad. So I hope we stand beside, behind Sheriff Hakes. I will stand behind him, and a lot of people I know are standing behind him. And maybe after this meeting, I'd like to sit down with him and his lawyer, to give him a little insight on Chippewa County. It'd probably be interesting to people that weren't on the board before. These games got to quit. This one here is a waste of taxpayers' money. If you think it's so bad, having text messages, then have your, oops, have your picture put up with a two-page report, saying that you're dangerous because you filed for an investigation on county officials. I lost a lot of business over this. The last year, if the county board didn't want to listen, nobody. Just gave me the silent treatment. I don't like that kind of game. And if you people want to read this, how dangerous I am for filing for an investigation, Sheriff Hakes would have never did that. I talked to him about it. He'd use his common sense and interview everybody. Evidently, we like to cover stuff up that we don't want to talk about. I guess that's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you. And, sir, are you up to speak? Your name?
Frank Goodman.
Okay, Frank, yep, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chair, esteemed honor to be before you, this board, member of the public, both upstairs and downstairs, and the media. My name is Frank Goodman. I'm a resident of Towne Howard. In a previous life, I was actually on the county board, so I want to be truly transparent, I guess. I've never met Sheriff Hakes. In fact, I think that's him in the back there. Never met the guy. In fact, I voted for his opponent. But my opponent lost. Unlike a lot of Americans, I accepted this, and Mr. Hakes is a sheriff, period. I'm not going to talk about him as a person, I'm going to talk about the process. The process of democracy, where majority rules, is now gone disintegrated or decayed to the point of eight people on this county board decides the fate of this guy. That's unconscionable. All we have to do is look in the newspaper, or look on the television. We still have a character from two and a half years ago still says, the election of 2020 is rigged, and he went so far as to create an insurrection on the Capitol to get himself back in office. At the state level, we have a legislative speaker that's impaneled a secret panel of retired judges to find a way to get rid of a Supreme Court judge who was duly elected by the state of Wisconsin, won by over 11%, and she has never even heard a court case yet, and they wanted to throw her out, or impeach her, I'm sorry, impeach her and have or impeach her, I'm sorry, impeach her and have her thrown out before she's even heard a case. What has happened to our elective process? We, the people, make the choice, not you guys. I've already heard that someone's already made up the line, quote, "Double down already." Get rid of that guy, have him resign. No way. What he's done, from what I've read, and I've read it a few times, doesn't even rise to malfeasance. Doesn't rise to him creating any type of felony, or even a misdemeanor. Has he done dumb things? Damn right he has. Stupid in some ways, but I expect that. I expect that from any manager to make a mistake once in a while. Are you guys without sin that you can't cross the first rock? Every one of us, in a management position, has made a mistake. Own up to it, learn from it, and move on. It's gotten to the point that we have to defend ourselves against anything and everything. It's getting to be a joke. But the bottom line is, we, the people, the voters, voted him in. Not me, like I said, I voted against his opponent, or for his opponent, Mr. Kowalski. He lost. I accepted it. He's our sheriff. If I don't like him, I will vote against him the next time. And if 50% plus me vote for him, he's out. He has no recourse. All you're going to do is open a whole Pandora's box that he's going to have a wrongful termination suit, and then it's going to get drug through the newspaper, on television, all again. Let him do his job. Sure, we may not argue, that we can, we can argue about him, whether he's doing the right job, but it's his department. Department heads, especially the coordinator, whatever, executive coordinator, they should be going through him if they have a problem. There should be a governing committee, I'm pretty sure there was, there was back when I was, that overlooks his performance. This should never have gotten to this point. It should have been done at the committee level, if they was, but wrapped it ended, wrap him on his knuckles and say, "Don't do this again." As far as, my God, in one part of the, of the suit is, he wore shorts to work site. Oh, give me a break. How foolish. Think about it. The public looks at this. It's unbelievable. It's unconscionable. If he came there in his birthday suit, he's still the sheriff. The clothes do not make man. The man makes the position.
Okay, time.
As far as I'm concerned, he's done his job. He could, should be able to continue his job. You're going to open a Pandora's, a Pandora's box because you know, as well as I do, if you guys vote to throw him out, and it only takes eight votes, remember, eight votes to overturn the will of this county's voter.
Okay, your time is up.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We got it. Chad Harshman, Tom Gilbert, and then Janice Rasmussen. Do we have any of those people here?
Hi. I'm a former deputy from Chippewa County in the 1970s, so that makes me an old fart. But I've been through a lot of things. And the thing, I'm going to tell you just a few things that's coming, that's going to shock you. The Supreme Court is going to have a ruling in the next couple days that's going to shock you. It's going to get rid of the many, many people in the government, many people in the government. Has anybody here heard of Nussera Dussera? Okay, no, you haven't. You should, because it's something that's really coming on. The government's going to change, there's going to be a lot of things going to change. You won't believe what's going to happen. Now, many years ago in the 70s, when I was a young deputy sheriff, Wes Peterson was the sheriff. And then he went through a witch hunt, witch hunt, just like this. Just terrible. He had attorneys, and they had attorneys, and he won. You don't know how much power the sheriff has. He'll, he, he can scare you. This man is powerful, and he's a hell of a good person. I'm very proud of him. I don't know more, much more to say about that, but go home and check out Nussera Dussera, you're going to be surprised. The flag has a golden fringe on it. Do you know what that means? That's rule by admiralty law. The Constitution in 1976 is common law. That's, does, they're going to retrain all the judges, they're going to retain all the lawyers under common law. Common law says, you don't even need a license plate on your car. So this is a witch hunt. That's a great man. Thank you.
Sir. Okay. Okay, back again, Tom Gilbert, or Chad Harshman? Do we have Chad? Okay, you're up.
Hey. I don't know Travis very well. I just, I voted for him, and I, I had a few questions for him, just like I do anybody that I choose to, or any position I go to choose to vote for. And I just came to say that he answered things in a different way than the previous sheriff who just wouldn't respond. Because when I ask questions, important questions, sometimes they're tough ones that are important to me, like government overreach, COVID restrictions, possible red flag, future red flag laws and problems like that, that could occur. The sheriff is our, our last resort. Kind of our last defense. And it means a lot to me to get the right answers. And answers right away. Not beating around the bush, not what the former sheriff did. He wanted me to come in, he wanted me to call him, probably so he could fill me full of a bunch of crap, and then do whatever he wanted to do, and he didn't want to get put on paper, or in writing. When I asked Travis, he had no problem telling me exactly what he thought and how he felt, and it was right now. And that went a long ways for me. He also had the right answers as far as knowing who his bosses are and who they aren't. And the government is not his boss. The, the governor is not his boss, I should say. We are. And he knows that. And the only other thing is, I just think that, you know, I read everything, both sides. My mind wasn't changed. Just, it just really wasn't. I didn't see anything criminal there at all. And I just think that people should let him at least finish his, what he's doing. Let him run again, and then maybe next time, your guy will win. And that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Good, thank you. Tom Gilbert?
Hello. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name's Tom Gilbert. I currently am serving on the Duncane Board as the supervisor for District 25. But while Travis was the police chief in Elk Mound, I was on the village board. I was chairman of the Public Safety Committee on the village when we hired him, and, and towards the end of his time as our police chief, I was the village board president. When I first met Travis, he came into my shop. I own a gun shop in Elk Mound. And a very engaging young man, is what he was. Obviously, in that position, I run into a lot of law enforcement come in. He was there for 45 minutes, and I had no idea. Usually, I spot him pretty much at the door, and if I don't, they'd let me know. But we were looking for a police chief, and I was on that committee. And when he told me he was in law enforcement, he was working in Halle. And in a small town, I wanted a community-based police chief. I wanted somebody who would interact with the community and not be intimidating and, and handle things differently. And I encouraged him to apply for the job that day, first day I met him. We hired him, and when he chose to leave, it was our loss. As far as the allegations and such in place, as mentioned earlier, I, I do believe there was a number of policy deviations on, on how this was handled. To be tried in a court of public opinion is unfair in a scenario like this. To find out you're being charged with something is unfair in a scenario like this. In my personal knowledge of Travis since then, this all seems very uncharacteristic. He is a very friendly person, if you know him. He's engaging, he looks at you when you talk to him. These days, people aren't used to being engaged. You can look somebody in the eye and say hello to them, and they'll blush almost. That's unfortunate. It's, I've read the texts, and even though, even out of context, they were nothing that should have ever been brought here. And in context, it was also, as previously mentioned, humorous. I, I do hope you all consider this scenario. We're all subject to being accused of something, and once you're on your heels, you're on your heels. And it's hard to recover from that. I often equate political discussions and accusations to a bunch of people in an elevator. You fart in an elevator, you look at the person next to you and go, dude. It's over. That guy's guilty. The entire time, everyone looks, there's, there's no getting around it. Sometimes casting that first stone is all it takes, whether it's valid or not, even if you're exonerated. And I believe he certainly should be, and that's on you guys to do. But I think the will of the people, he was elected as the responsibility. Travis was good at sniffing out improprieties, even our small village, and pointed things out. And when I was president, there were changes that had to be made. And that's no way to make friends with the establishment in a small town. But he did the right thing. And he was also the only police chief we ever had that actually took the bicycle out that we had for the police department, and was at school crossings on it and engaging with kids and talking to people. I, I think he's a good man, and you guys are lucky to have him, and, and it was our loss. So, thank you very much, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Janice Rasmussen, then Paul Krimenauer, then Scott Boystel?
There's been a lot of positives said here, and unfortunately, I had the opportunity to be on the negative side. I was involved in a civil lawsuit in Brown County filed by my sister-in-law regarding my mother-in-law's estate. There was four defendants, of which I am one of them. At that time, we are snowbirds, and we leave in January. The lawsuit was filed on December 22nd, 2022. Well, we left the first part of January, and I was aware that the three other defendants had been served. So, we are in Florida, and I get a phone call from one of the deputies. And he says, "I have papers for you." And I said, "Excuse me?" He said, "I have papers for you." And I said, "Hmm, okay." I said, "Read them to me." I said, "Are you trying to serve me?" "Well, yeah, I guess." And I said, "You do realize you can't do that over the phone. You have to serve someone in person." And he said, "Oh, yes, I can." And I said, "Oh, no, you can't." So, we left it at that. And I, and I said, "You'll hear from our attorney." The next day, he calls me again. He said, "I left the papers in your mailbox." Can you believe it? So, I said, "You can't do that." And I said, "You'll hear from our attorney." I was mad. And our attorney has 45 days to respond to an appropriate serving. This was not an appropriate serving. So, I was mad. I called the attorney, he said, "Don't worry about it." I was so angry, I called Sheriff Hakes. Of course, he didn't answer the phone. I left him a scathing voicemail about, "He better learn the proper process of our state laws for serving people." And I said, "You better check your statutes before you call me back." He didn't. He had the deputy call me and leave a voicemail. All right, so, my lawyer, and every time our lawyer has to file something, it costs us money, filed a dismissal. Okay, so we get back in April, and the deputy then shows, he calls and says, "Are you home?" And I said, "Yes, we are." He said, "Well, I'm going to bring your papers." And I said, "That's fine." So he brings the papers. They were beyond the filing date. They had to be filed within 90 days of when the lawsuit was started. This tells me, somewhere in the upper levels, there is a lack of understanding of our state statutes, which is up here. So, my attorney pulls up the filing, which surprised me, is first, that they were dumb enough to file with Brown County, and second, that Brown County was dumb enough to take it. Because on the bottom of the filing, it said, "Out of town until spring, service complete via telephone, and papers left at residence, refused to provide current address in Florida. Requested documents served to attorney." I didn't refuse to give our address. He said he was going to mail them to me. And I said, "You can't do that. You must serve us in person." There's been no resolution, so once again, it was beyond the 90 days. Our attorney had to go back to court to file a dismissal. It still has not been resolved. But this tells me there's a lack of understanding at our upper level, Sheriff's Department, on appropriate process for filing serving papers. And I did leave Sheriff Hakes a scathing email, and I didn't even swear at him. So, this, this is, this is the problem I have with this whole thing. Is there appropriate education? Do they know what they're doing? I don't know about the sexual harassment and any of that, and I don't really care about that. Yes, I'm a woman, and I have been sexually harassed in the past, but it's more the actual dealing with the appropriate state laws. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Krimenauer?
Copy, if you'd like a copy of it. Want a copy of that?
Clerk?
Yeah.
Okay, Paul Krimenauer? And then Scott?
Paul Krimenauer, most of yous know me. I'm sorry, I'm at the wrong meeting, put it that way. I didn't come here to talk about anyone, but I want to thank yous. Today, I was up in the Coney Forest, and we were working on the trails and fixing some signs and stuff. We run into a group of people from Menominee, and there was one from Oshkosh. And they want to thank you for the trail that we have up in this Coney Forest. People are really happy with it. And yes, we always hear the complaints, but this was a very positive thing today. And it takes a lot of work. And you're going to see me in the next three, four months again, because, like tonight, we have on the agenda for some ATV issues that we're working on, changing the ordinances. And I think it's all positive, so you're just getting my support for it and keeping you updated on what's happening. But you guys have a good evening. I'm going home. So, thank you.
Thank you. And then, is it Scott Boystel? Did I butcher his name?
Scott Bolstead.
Bolstead.
Yep. I'm the Wisconsin State Outreach Director for U.S. Senator Ron Johnson. I tend to go to the most important things in my district or region. In northern Wisconsin, tonight, that's you. Normally, I do not speak at these things, but I just wanted to urge some caution. It seems this whole thing here, right now, is premature. Until you settle on a crime, then you should be doing this. Until that point, I, I don't know what you're doing. But, and then looking forward, if you vote to remove the sheriff, knowing my governor, he will accommodate you, guaranteed. Because he sees a chance to replace a Republican sheriff with a Democrat one. He will do that. For the board members, you got to explain to your constituents that they were wrong in their vote. Good luck with that. But the most important thing is, if you do this without there being a crime being committed, you can expect the county to lose several million dollars during the lawsuit, which you will lose. And you can explain that to your constituents, why the county is out several million dollars for letting somebody go without really just cause. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Alrighty. That concludes our members of the public wishing to be heard. Okay. We'll move on to number six, the consent agenda. At this time, I would seek a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Omar moves.
Omar? And is there a second?
One second.
One second. Any discussion? Hearing none, then we'll call the vote. Press green to approve. Red to disapprove.
20 yes, 0 no.
The agenda passes. Then we'll move on to reports. Update on the 2024 proposed budget. Randy Schultz.
Thanks, Chair. My name's Randy Schultz. I'm the Chippewa County Administrator. We put this together just because we have a lot of new members and just to keep the timeline straight on where we are with the budget process. So, you guys, if there's any questions, as always, you can reach out and talk to me, but this is the best way to look at the current budget. Any questions?
Okay. We'll move on to my report on the District 4 County Board Supervisor vacancy. We have three applicants that have come in. The application time period has expired and we will be moving forward, doing interviews, probably, hopefully, depending upon their schedules, within the next week. Okay, we will move on to number three and this will be the statement of Sheriff Hakes to the county board. This is not an interactive, there will not be questions to be able to be asked. This is his opportunity to speak. So, Sheriff Hakes, you are up to bat.
Thank you, Chairman. Before we start that, would you like somebody to distribute those? Because it's--
This is your board member? It's your written statement, then?
Yep, there's a written, copy of my written statement in there. And then, there's things in my statement that I referenced. And due to the fact that I was able to finally sit down with a redacted copy of the report after it was released to the media--
Okay.
--I had to, so it takes some of my statement. There's things in here that put it in context and they're verified. And there's 20 copies for the board members. Some of them will get pink binders, some of them will get blue and yellow. There's some decorative ones in there too, I guess.
I guess the one who hand, through the clerk, she can--
There you go.
--get those handed out? In the record?
Didn't get one.
So, before I begin, I would just like to let you know that, you know, you guys met for over four hours in the first closed session meeting. Was not allowed to be here at that time. Was not allowed that I was, I didn't know I was allowed to be here at the second one or I would have been here. If you turn to the very back, last few pages here, I apologize, the last full sheet in the backside of one sheet is receipt for guns. You turn to the very back, it should be, there's a section in there marked Exhibit K. And there are several pages marked Exhibit K. And that's the speech that I'll be referencing. So, later on, if you have questions about what I said, it'll be for the media outlets that are here. In the interest of transparency, after you folks have a time to look through this, I will release it to the public if they request it. So, there's nothing in here, the exception of certain prices on some stuff. Individuals have clarity on that, we'll get that to you, but I redacted it just due to business interests for companies that I don't control. With that being said, if it's all right with you, I'd like to start. And as the chairman said, chairman, I must confess, I think when I read this, it maybe took me 11 minutes at one point. So, I may go slightly over, but it should stay under 12 for sure.
Let's do our best for 10.
Okay. Okay. County Board Supervisors, I stand here before you tonight, finally able to speak to you in person, 144 days after I was first made aware of an issue brought forward to HR by one of my employees. Tonight is a meeting I wish I could have occurred 143 days ago, as it would have prevented a lot of misunderstandings on all sides. In the interest of full transparency, I will recap how we got to this point. May 19th, I was told one of my employees had expressed concerns to HR over some text messages that made her feel uncomfortable. I was asked not to have contact with that employee. I originally misunderstood that the request was not to have contact with the entire communications center. So, I did stop and talk to other employees when I was aware that that specific employee wasn't present. Contrary to Hall's report, I was not frequently in the communications center, or contrary to Hall's report, I was frequently in the communications center during multiple shifts, offering to buy them all lunch or take lunch orders. I have not had any form of contact with that specific employee since two days before her statement. In fact, my attempt to honor the request not to have any contact with her, I took steps to ensure that there was no accidental contact in the office, which may have resulted in me working more remotely and maybe why some of my employees claimed that I was absent. In preceding weeks, I had four face-to-face meetings with county officials, having been that way. And I was told by Administrator Scholz, yeah, we'll share that with the county board. I asked for clarification on what part of the county policy I felt I had violated and Administrator Scholz replied, the whole policy. It is worth noting that this policy is very long and covers a wide range of topics. This is the last opportunity I had to speak with county officials prior to the closed session meeting where the board voted to hire an attorney. I was told I was not allowed at the closed session meeting in June. Following the first closed session meeting, I once again met with county officials and was told an attorney would be contacted as she would be conducting an investigation into the matter. I expressed concerns for the privacy and confidentiality of all given the presence of an external investigator, which is not in here, but here's what we got to today. As the investigation began, I learned that this attorney was part of a law firm from Madison that has earned an unfavorable reputation across Wisconsin for being anti-law enforcement. Initially, a few scheduling conflicts prevented me from speaking with her. I believed that she would not represent my interests, so I retained my own counsel. And we decided it would be best to decline to participate in the investigation. I believed then and still believe now that participating in an interview with Attorney Hall for quote, "five to six hours" was not in the best interest of taxpayers of Chippewa County. While I did not participate in Hall's investigation, I have welcomed conversations with my employees, HR, county administration, and all of you, the elected officials of the Chippewa County Board. I was not told directly that the closed session meeting on September 19th was about me, but I drew my own conclusions based on comments Administrator Scholz made to the media. I reached out to Chairman Gullikson on the evening of September 15th and told him, if I was indeed the subject of that meeting, I would like an opportunity to speak to the board. I was told I was not needed at that meeting and took the context of that conversation to indicate that I was not allowed to be there, if it was for sure about me. I was disheartened to later learn that during the meeting, you were threatened with possible civil or criminal litigation if you did not vote to send the matter to the district attorney's office. Furthermore, it is my understanding that you were told not to reach out to me personally. You should not fear legal recourse in seeking the truth, or spoke with any of you. Like members of the public, I learned of the motion passed in closed session, which included discussions of my removal from office from the media. I was not even allowed to review a copy of the report for six days after the meeting, while the public was under the impression that I had committed serious crimes. When I was finally able to review the report with my attorney, one week after it was voted on, we were not allowed privacy to discuss it, nor were we given a copy to review privately. We had to sit at the HR director's desk with Chippewa County Corporation Counsel as we read through its contents. I was not provided a hard copy of the report until after it was sent to the media. As I read through the report, I was shocked by the overreaching accusations contained in it, far removed from the original verbal complaint that began this investigation. The report is filled with hearsay and conjecture based on the comments of a few employees and county officials. In the report, I found over a dozen provable inaccuracies. I have detailed several of those inaccuracies in the counter investigation I have provided to you. As you will see, my counter investigation, Hall omitted at least one interview from the report. During this interview, the employee was asked direct questions and provided direct answers. These answers did not fit Hall's narrative and thus were excluded from the report. Hall's report suggests that everyone include, or everyone she spoke with provided the same answers and that simply isn't true. Furthermore, the report does not include the entire text conversation with the former employee. There's at least one section not included in the screenshots. This is an issue as it takes conversation out of context. I find it troubling that an 87-page report full of provable inaccuracies and deception is what has been used against me to claim I'm not trustworthy. The question I want each of you to ponder during the remainder of my speech is this. Why would you believe the words of an obviously biased attorney from Madison who financially profited from this investigation and who I will prove withheld critical information from her report to drive home false narratives over the words of your duly-elected sheriff who the majority of your constituents voted for based on his reputation of being honest and trustworthy? I now, or I would now like to take a moment to address the few accusations included in the report and issues that have been mentioned in public discourse. I encourage you to review my counter investigation for a more detailed response on these and other issues. One member of this board made a public statement asking for my resignation while implying there was zero political motivation behind this charade. You do not have to look very far in this report to find many of the statements were provided by individuals who actively campaigned against me. One would be naive to think there isn't political motivation behind many of the statements in this report. It was not my intention to imply that members of this board are my political adversaries, but rather to point out that the biased information you were presented was largely corrected or collected from my political adversaries. Next, I would like to address my schedule. As your sheriff, I am on duty 24/7, 365 and 366 on a leap year. I inherited a culture at the sheriff's office in which management is in the office Monday through Friday and normally gone by 4:00 p.m. During my campaign, I promised to lead from the front, not from behind a desk. I recognize that public safety does not only take place during banker's hours. That's why you'll frequently find me on patrol on nights and weekends, attending community events and interacting with kids on the recess playground. With over 100 employees in the sheriff's office, many meetings occur without my involvement. When my attendance is requested, I make it a priority to participate. However, when I'm not needed in the office, you'll likely find me out and about in the community. When it comes to training, I am fully in compliance with the mandatory peace officer requirements of the state of Wisconsin. I value training and have frequently sought out training opportunities throughout my career, including becoming a certified crisis negotiator and a certified evidence technician. It has always been my intention to take leadership courses recommended by the county. But given the fact that our office already had exceeded its training budget, I opted to take these courses at a later time when my schedule and budget allowed. I have since completed the remaining training offered by the county in leadership. On a policy, I do not and have never believed the rules don't apply to me. The fact that I stand before you with a full beard after amending our grooming policy shows you that I said what's good for the goose is good for the gander. And that was the first policy we changed, right? When I reviewed our policy manual, I discovered that many of the policies are in need of corrections or updates. This responsibility falls under the job description of one of my command staff and is a task that currently is being addressed. Hall's criticism of me not signing off on policies is misplaced. For me to sign off on improper policies would increase the civil liability exposure for the county, or of the county, and I will not be signing off on any policies until I am sure they meet all legal, constitutional, and operational requirements. Prior to being sworn in as sheriff, like many peace officers, I did off-duty work and had side businesses to help provide for my family. To the limited extent these businesses have continued since I have been sworn into office, I have not had a single transaction with a sheriff's office employee in either my real estate or firearms business. At the suggestion of several employees, I ordered coffee mugs with the sheriff's office logo on them to improve morale and instill pride in our office. I purchased these mugs with my own money for 14049, right? So, 1405 each and sold them at a small loss for 14. I have not profited a single dime from these sales. Lastly, in regard to my text messages with the employee, my intention was to make her feel welcome and included in our office. While I do not believe these text messages were sexual in any way, I can understand how some may find them to be too personal for employment-based setting and I have learned from this experience. While Hall's situation has caused much turmoil, I'd be remiss if I did not point out the positive results that Hall's report and the county's request to look into this matter has yielded. I requested our peer support team develop recreational activities and a list of things to do outside of work and encourage them to engage in our onboarding of new employees to make them feel welcome, as this situation has made me recognize that it is not a task I should directly handle. The peer support team was also something I developed since I took office. I was aware that our policy manual is in need of some updates. I was unaware of the extent to which it had been neglected. This is a task that falls under one of my command staff and is actively being worked on. I have recognized the importance of county places on leadership training. I have completed one of the recommended courses and I'm actively researching others specifically related to my position.
Okay, Sheriff, are you about wrapped up?
Yep.
Your period has expired.
No, yep, just, I got like two paragraphs here.
They've got that in the book, they can read it. They can read it. So--
Okay.
Yeah. But, thank you.
So, you guys got four hours and I got 12 minutes. Anybody, I will leave you with this. If any of you have any questions for me, my phone number, you guys probably all have it by now, you can call me, come to my house, I'll come to your house. Got any questions, you get ahold of me. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. Last thing, sorry. The very end of this, I am not going to read it, but I will tell you that in the interest of privacy, if you are meeting in closed session to discuss anything that involves me, I waive all my rights to privacy. And in the interest of transparency with the media and everybody here, I would encourage you to stay in open session. I see no reason for you to go into closed session.
We'll then move into business items. Number one, closed session. Supervisor Skarsky, could you read the motion?
The county board will convene in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute Section 19.851F, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons, which if discussed in public would likely to have substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such research data or involved in such problems or investigation. And pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute Section 19.851G, conferring with the legal counsel for the governmental body who was rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved, involving internal investigations of allegations of misconduct by the sheriff, and consult with legal counsel regarding potential litigation arising out of the allegations of misconduct by the sheriff. Closed session motion to include county board supervisors, Randy Scholz, Jim Sherman, Tony Hofelder, and any legal counsel from Von Briesman and Rover.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay, is there a second?
Bomar will second.
Okay, Bomar.
Second. Was that a motion? I heard the county board will convene, I didn't hear a motion. Did you make, was that made as a?
Yes, it was announced as a motion.
Okay.
Yes, it was a motion.
Just to make sure.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, then we will call the vote. We gotta wait for our technology to catch up. We're there. Green to approve, red to disapprove.
16 yes, 4 no.
Okay, motion carries. Then we'll have to have everyone leave with the people mentioned in the motion.
What's the case? We don't have any. We're gonna pull voice. Oh my god.
Two.
I'm gonna set these back up here and then in the press. Yep, like, don't empty them and set them here, so I'm gonna wait till this is done. I'm gonna take them out. I may, if you would like me to, I will stick for all. Well, we'll figure out how late it is.
I have this, I have this.
Grandpa. My kiddos with grandpa and he better be in it or very shortly.
My kids usually try to do that into letting them stay up till mom gets home on. I don't think that's grandma thing, is it?
That, we reserve that, right? Well, then we can fill them full of sugar and send them home.
I have a magnet on my refrigerator. Being an aunt, we just never having to send them. So I send that to my sisters all the time. They get ready.
Oh my god, that sounds like a good book.
You were not.
High stream is all stood and going again up here. I don't think anyone is.
Do you? My first text is for my son going.
Yes, him recorded.
Now we can put basketballs, correct? I can put that up on the food tier. And then when they call it back. Did we set a time that we're coming back? It's fine. When you started that, then I was.
Yes.
Okay, yes, um, I can watch it right now.
Okay, yes, um, I can watch it right now. Right. Well. I. But I don't.
Oh.
This way. I'm not. Fuck. Apparently my. Say that. Yep, that's. It's a. Trying to set him into letting him stay up.
You're trying to see the movie, yeah, to the movies. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
I questioned that.
He is here. Oh, yeah. You have that memorized. Policy there.
To be like. He would've just walked us.
What's that?
I should tell him.
Yes. Are you?
Okay.
So you gotta.
This is.
Oh, really?
So I wonder if she's watching. Cause apparently the live screen gets framed above my shoulders.
Oh, yeah, I'm not in it.
Yeah, you're. You do whatever.
Except for when I walk in.
Oh, yeah.
With my coworkers, they're not gonna let me live down.
Nope, never. All my coworkers are either my age or. Six years old, so I don't care.
So much. Since we come there.
Mm-mm.
Probably run. Done, it doesn't work well. Can't.
Let's keep it.
Okay.
It may have. Yeah, that's true.
Family restaurant. Do we get overtime after a certain thing?
I mean.
These meetings that we have in the spring, you know, with all that stuff. Just like it's just.
The only.
The thing is. But the chair generally, he has.
Yes. Yeah, we did that. Months back. We're like just. That one.
Alright.
Not just to run. Yeah.
But he spent, he spent three hours. And then he was close to our family.
We will. The board has been reconvened back to open session. Number two, the county will discuss and take possible.
Chair, can you use your microphone?
Sorry about that. Okay, here we go. Number two of the county board will discuss and take possible action based upon the investigation authorized by the county board regarding allegations. Conduct the sheriff may also include consideration and authorizing proceedings pursuant to Wisconsin statute, chapter seventeen.
A quick reminder to county board supervisors, if you request to speak, just press the one or the green button. Uh, just so that way the chair can see your name on there. Do not need to push one or two to show just number one, please.
Okay. No motion. Okay. We'll entertain motions if there's any motions. Supervisor Tudenberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I'd like to begin with a motion, first and foremost, to recognize the Chippewa County employees, more specifically, the employees of the Sheriff's Department for their perseverance through this matter. Uh, regardless of how this comes out in the end, uh, I think it's their. I think it's their burden to bear for the most part, having to deal with, with a tumultuous situation regardless. So I guess I would ask for suggestions or. Uh, to assist in this motion from other supervisors, but the motion I would make is that the board. Show support in some manner to the employees of Chippewa County, more specifically administration, as well as the Sheriff's Department employees. If that can be cleaned up in some way, that'd be great.
I second that motion.
Okay, let's get the motion first, but appreciate trying to expedite here, yep. So Reader's Digest version, want to recognize the employees. Be persevering through the investigation of this matter.
Yeah, at the, yeah, the Reader's Digest version, yes.
Okay. Alright.
To get a motion on the floor.
So would that be your motion?
That would be my motion.
Okay. And clerk, can you read the motion?
Sure.
I have a motion by Supervisor Tudenberg to recognize Chippewa County employees for persevering through this time and investigation.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Later, I'll second that.
Later, seconds that motion? Discussion? Supervisor.
I think, uh, somewhere in that motion, it should be that, uh, we. Direct the administration. Leadership of the county here to, uh, make sure and support. All I can to the, to the employees.
So you, you're offering an amendment?
Yeah.
Okay, so what, let's get the wording down for that, so the clerk can get that on.
Amendment should read. Also, uh, the board would like to have the, uh, administration. And human resources. Continue their efforts to help the employees in the affected area.
Okay. And when the clerk has this written down, we'll have her read it back to make sure it reflects your motion. Or. She does not have it though. Could you re?
So I have a motion to amend by Supervisor Steele. Also, the board would like administration and human resources to continue supporting the employees in the affected areas.
Oh.
Department. I don't.
Okay. That's the amendment, is there a second? Erickson seconds.
Second that.
Okay, so the amendment second. So, we will vote. Whenever.
I have to type it in first.
Does she gets it typed in and we get our electronic caught up with us? Hey, ready? Okay, to approve the amendment now, you would push your green button. To disapprove, you'd press your red. Amendment, yes. Okay, whenever you're ready.
Twenty, yes. Nope, nineteen, yes, one, no.
Okay, so the man, the motion is amended, now we will vote on the original motion. Would you? Refresh their memory?
It's a motion to recognize Chippewa County employees for persevering through this time and investigation. Board would also like administration and human resources to continue supporting the employees in the affected departments.
Okay. Any further discussion? Supervisor.
Thank you, Sir Chair. I, I think this is important and the, the main call out is regardless of your opinion or perspective on the situation at hand. This, this is no fault of the hardworking men and women of, uh, the department and of the county in general, so. I think we need to separate that out from, um, the overall discussion we're having about the situation at hand, that, that I'm sure that. Their lives have been very, uh, impacted by this as well, so I think it's important to keep that perspective of, uh, what they're going through as well.
Okay. Any other discussion? Supervisor Hunt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I concur with Supervisor Bergeron's statement. Hardly. Um, it, it can't be an easy situation for any of the people that are working in Chippewa County right now, as well as, you know, um, people that may consider working here. So we want to make sure that we're taking good care of the folks that work here.
Supervisor Hall?
In addition, I'd like to recognize the extra burden that we have on our HR people and administration as well. We're at the center of this and, um. Much of their time is directed towards this despite the other, the other responsibilities they have.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, then we will call the vote. Now, to approve the motion as amended, you would press your green button. To disapprove, you press your red. Whenever you're ready. Supervisor Miller? Oh, there you go, okay.
Twenty, yes, zero, no.
Okay, passes.
Mr. Chair. I'd like to offer another motion on this matter.
Supervisor Tudenberg, your motion would be?
My motion on this matter would be to direct county administration, including, uh, human resources to now, in light of this latest information presented tonight from Sheriff Hakes, to direct them to continue the investigation. Uh, into the allegations raised over the past several months and that. Uh, we have time to review this information presented tonight, as well as. The, uh, rebuttal statement issued by Sheriff Hakes after the open record release of information.
Okay, and.
Clean that up any way you want.
Alright.
I'd seek the advice of counsel too.
We'll see how close they have these. You don't, okay.
Motion to direct administration and human resources to continue investigation after.
Uh, based on the new information that's been provided by Sheriff Hakes. Tonight?
Um, Mr. Co- uh, act, uh, tonight as well as in the recent past.
Yes, all. Including like with the, I think the.
Augmentation.
Augmentation.
Yes.
Yeah, all information has been provided by the sheriff.
That would suffice.
So it could be motion, the motion by Rob Tudenberg to direct county administration. HR to continue investigating based on new information that's been provided by Sheriff Hakes that was not provided at the time of the investigation.
Correct.
Okay. Did you take any time to type that all?
I sure.
You seconded? Okay, is there a second to the motion?
Bomar will second.
Bomar will second that. We will give them a moment now to put that into the electronic system and then we will vote.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would like to add an amendment to this motion. Okay.
Well, yeah, it's been seconded.
Second.
Bomar second.
Um, I would also like it to include not only the information, uh, Sheriff Hakes brought up tonight and in the recent past, but also any other. Element that needs for the vetting or investigation. That may come, become apparent.
So you're looking.
I don't want to limit us to just what Sheriff Hakes presented, I want all the facts.
Any, you're just talking any information then, or what? Just so we apply them.
Any of.
Amendment.
I want the investigation, investigation to be complete, I don't want anything over, not investigated because we didn't order this motion correctly. Because we have, what we said is to investigate, further investigate the information that Sheriff Hakes provided, but if something else comes to light, that needs to also be investigated. I'm not saying it will, or I don't believe it will, but if it does.
I'm gonna ask corporate counsel here to.
Let him, let him clean it up.
Amendment, yeah, please do. He's here.
He gets paid, he got paid and went to school a lot longer than I do.
And I think, I think what, um. Ken. I think Supervisor, um, Schmidt is saying is language similar to that was in the last direction of the investigation back in June. It said any other issues that arise during the investigation.
That's always worded.
Okay. And y'all understand, I think that's what he's getting at, so I think the motion is to amend it to include any other. That, I don't have the language from that last.
I don't have it on me. There've been, it's on the minutes of this meeting, so.
Oh, is it?
Yeah. Cause it was close session, it's been released. Yep, it was the June twentieth. The June twentieth close session minutes.
Should be right.
Motion to authorize county administration to investigate a complaint under chapter seven, section sixty-nine of Chippewa County Human Resources Policy Manual, including Sheriff Hakes' alleged conduct using means determined. Determined by county administration or county administration to investigate issues arising during the investigation. And for the county administration to take rapid and constructive remedial action during the investigation and afterwards as contemplated by chapter seven, section sixty-nine. So that's pretty close. Any other issues that arise during the investigation? I think what he's getting at is there could be something that comes up, you may not have specifically addressed, and I think what Mr. Schmidt is saying is he'd like to give the investigator some latitude, if there's some things that come up based on the information provided by Mr. Hakes in the follow-up. So I guess the motion would be to amend to include and to follow up on any other invest, any other issues that arise during, uh, the follow-up investigation.
Does that reflect your amendment?
Yes, I just don't, I just don't want to constrict investigator to just one thing, if, if there's something else you should be looking into, I want it looked into on either side. I want, I want the facts when we're done, the right information.
So clerk, do you have the amendment?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Alrighty.
Peterson, I'll second it.
Peterson seconds.
Can I get a point of clarification?
Sure.
Um, does this mean we continue with an investigation from the investigator, or you want the county administrator and HR director to take over the investigation?
I want a third party, I want independent third party.
Oh, okay.
So, we will vote on the amendment first? We will vote on the amendment first. Yeah, waiting for you to put it. Discussion? Any further discussion on that amendment? And I would have you read the amendment to the board, and then we will vote.
Motion to amend by Supervisor Schmidt to include any other issues that arise during the follow-up investigation.
Okay, hearing no further discussion, then we will commence with the vote. Green to approve the amendment, now red to disapprove. Every ready. Your vote isn't taken, Roger? There you go.
Twenty, yes. Zero, no.
Okay, then, back to the original motion as amended. Any discussion? You get your?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, could I ask a question of the county administrator? Just as point of clarification, is it your understanding that you, I had, or that, that Sheriff Hakes was notified of this investigation and given the opportunity to provide insight and information on multiple occasions?
Yes.
Should you have had this, what's been titled as counter-investigation, or at least any type of information from him, would this have made this matter more expeditious?
I, I don't know, total time, because I haven't read what, I haven't seen what's in there. You know, typically in an investigation, normal investigation, you would get the investigated, would have the complaint, you would interview everybody, you would interview the person at the complaint's against, you would look to see if that, what the, the, the person that the complaint was against, if that was truthful or not, because then you'd have to go back and interview the other people, and there's other facts, and so time-wise, I don't know. I mean, it's, you know, and I could have kept on going back and forth for how long it would take, but yeah, I think if, if you would have initially been involved in the investigation, it could have been quicker.
In your time as county administrator, I'm sorry for taking up this much time, Mr. Chair, in your time as a county administrator and being involved in internal investigation of policy violation, is it standard procedure, in your opinion, to hand out or to give the respondent to these issues a written notification or a written report of the internal policy violation?
No, with, no, we, we tell them what the policy violation is. The policy violation's the whole policy. So, it's not two sentences of the policy, it's, that's what you're accused of being in violation of, and that's what we did in this case, same, same way we do in any investigation.
And any policy violations that are alleged in this matter throughout the last several months, in those policy violations, in the policy manual of Chippewa County, does it require that the respondent be given written notification of any policy internal violations via the county or the sheriff's department?
No, it would, for in HR world, and I was an HR director, no, you interview people, you talk to people, especially a case like this, when it's concerning possible sexual harassment, you don't have people relive their experience. Writing it down can be triggers for them. You interview them, you talk to them as a person.
And then the final point I, I have to make, and thank you for the information, is that the purview of the county administration to, to do a criminal investigation, including the right to an attorney, the right to face one's accuser, or these under other criminal type due process matters?
No, no, the internal of us, that's you, that's law enforcement world, that's not our world.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Then, we will call the vote. Or did I?
It finally worked. Oh. I'd like to make a statement, and some misrepresentations made tonight. This board has and will follow the process laid out in state statutes. We have not, up to this time, taken any action at this point to utilize Chapter 17. It remains an option, but no actions we have taken up to this point are due to Chapter 17. We have simply stated we have serious concerns that need to be cleared up. It's our due diligence, we must do this. That's what we took this seat for, is there's accusations, and we have to follow up on them with the county employee. It's policy, we have to follow that policy. So, like I say, we haven't taken any action contrary to what the media wants to say. We, once it goes to Chapter 17, this board has no role in his removal. That's for others beyond our control. But we haven't taken any action in that arena at this point.
Any other discussion?
I just want to go one step farther on what Ken said, of the voters to know that, too, not just the media and everybody here, that we are not into Chapter 17 at this point, and nowhere did we say we were going to go to Chapter 17, but you know, we are looking out for the voters, we're looking out for the workers, we're looking out for everybody, and that's not just, you know, one side.
Okay. Any other discussion? This, this will be the motion as amended now. So. You need to, you need her to read it again. Otherwise, if not, we can proceed with the vote. Green to approve, red to disapprove. Can release.
Twenty, yes. Zero, no.
Okay. Any other motions come forward, this issue? And we will move on. At this time, Supervisor Buck, you have a motion?
I make a motion that we suspend the rest of the business items until our next meeting. Quite a while. Seconded motion. Make your motion adjourn.
Okay. I got to try to convince conversations going on. Motion to-
He's asking to tape these, asking to put these off to the next meeting.
To the next meeting.
I did receive a message from the staff in the hallway that said they promised to be brief. Because they've been waiting downstairs to come up here.
Okay, so your motion stands?
Seconded.
Who seconded? Who seconded? Okay. Erickson. Okay, motion's been made and seconded to adjourn.
Okay, there's more than just, point of order, sorry, too. There's more than business items on this agenda, so there would still be one more, you wouldn't be able to automatically adjourn.
No, that's correct. We have to adjourn after this. This is to suspend what we have here. Or to move it-
More than just business items is what I'm saying. On your agenda, yeah.
Right, the appointments. My understanding, staff from the administration office, that this could wait till next finish. Okay.
Not what the motion was, is what I'm saying for point of order. There's a non-business item on them. It's not under the business items section of the agenda.
Excuse me, I can't hear, there's a lot of chatter, and I can't really hear Supervisor Bergeron.
Okay, I understand where you're at. It's not a, it's a non-business item, the motion?
I think the motion is to enable the business items.
Suspend.
Postpone to the following meeting, the rest of the business, the rest of the items on the agenda, is that what it is?
Okay, so the motion would be to postpone all items except for the motion to adjourn. Would be postponed to next month meeting.
To the next meeting, because there are two November meetings, so.
Yes, the next-
The next November meeting.
Next November meeting. So Supervisor Steele made it, and Erickson seconded it. Next regular meeting. Don't get our meetings done here yet. Any discussion? Supervisor Flader.
The staff is here, and what's another half an hour to get this? Be quick and get this thing, I mean, we said, just not going to make that much difference, that's my opinion.
Okay. Supervisor Peterson?
My, it would be, I believe, the second reading from Land Conservation Forest was time-sensitive with ATV trails.
Why confirm with administration, think that it was that Paramount? Okay, Linda's here.
I think that's the ATV, um, when the ATV time is. And I believe our meeting is before that, that ordinance change is the change when ATVs can no longer use trail. And it's going to get moved, but we have a meeting before that would have to be invoked. That makes sense. This, you guys will be able to act on that before the date of that, correct? Because it's November 7th, our next meeting? So, you'd be okay.
Supervisor, Supervisor Ives?
Our next meeting is budget and law.
The next regular.
Regular meeting, this is the one after the budget meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
We also have the stormwater ordinance on the agenda, and DNR's been busting our chops because it's not done. We would like to get it done and, and completed.
I'm seeing staff here. I believe that one is time-sensitive. Is that be correct, Keddie? The stormwater ordinance, that's time-sensitive. End of November. Yeah, the option, then, we could waive. Okay, so, any other discussion? Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn Supervisor Bergeron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just echo agreement with Supervisor Flader. We could, we can power through this, I feel. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, then we will call the vote. Green to approve, red to disapprove. Soon as the, there it is. You can release.
Two, yes. Eighteen, no.
Moving on. Number three, ordinance 523, 16 County Forest Lands at Chippewa County Court of Ordinance, second reading. Linda's just going to take care of this.
Thank you.
Need a motion? Yeah, this second reading, so I need a motion to approve?
Bomar moves.
Okay, and is there a second by Berg? Okay, we-
Second reading of the County Forest Lands, Chapter 16. The major changes that were brought forth is to change the name of the boat landings to the names of the special use area to, to better identify their location. Added the management of taps, type B tax deed land. As before, it was basically undesignated, and so the rules of the county forest would now apply to the type B tax deed lands. And then the major change would be the date that the ATV trails are closed, and it's moved to the Monday prior to the Wisconsin's traditional deer gun season, so that it's a specific date and not a moving date as they had previously. Any questions?
Any questions?
So, the date previously was November 15th. It's now going to be the Monday prior to the Wisconsin's traditional deer gun season, so therefore, they always know it's the Monday prior to the gun deer season.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Ready for a vote? Okay, hearing none, we will call the vote. Green to approve, red to disapprove. Release?
Twenty, yes. Zero, no.
Okay. Ordinance is approved. Alrighty, ordinance 723 to repeal and recreate Chapter 12 Star of Water Management, this is first reading.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
I was just going to ask, do we want?
Second reading.
Okay, so the motion has been made to spend, suspend rules, go to the second reading. Is there a second?
Berg seconds.
Berg seconded that.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Point of order, please.
Yes.
Could we ask something quiet down in the hallway out there? I'm having a hard time. Do not shut them, you have to ask them to be quiet.
Yeah. Could, yeah, move them down the hallways. Okay, so the motion has been to waive the first reading and go to the second reading, so we need to we got to vote on the motion. We got to vote on the motion first, to waive it. So those, are you ready?
Yep.
Okay, those who want to waive and go to the second reading, press your green button. Those who'd want to disapprove.
Nineteen, yes. One, no.
Then we need the motion to approve. Since this is now the second reading. Bergeron makes motion, prove Hall makes the second. Discussion. Seeing the notice, do you want, do you want to speak on it, Ked? Or you guys? They want to really get out of here, so.
I, I, I apologize, this is my first board meeting, and I will not forget it. I'm Keddy Claw, I'm the environmental engineer for Land Conservation Forest Management. I will entertain any questions you have on the ordinance. You have everything in your packets. I do not want to keep you any longer than you have to be.
Okay, thank you.
All right. What are the changes from the ordinance before? We added a section on illicit discharge because it is a requirement of the MS4 permit, and it wasn't in there before. And the ordinance will now be for Chippewa County only, and the municipalities will have their own ordinance. Those are the big ones. There are other minor changes that are outlined on the spreadsheet on page 67.
Okay, any other discussion? Yes.
Does we had an agreement, signed an agreement with a lot of municipalities, with a lot of towns on water? And I'm just wondering if that was stormwater?
Right.
This stormwater or wastewater?
Stormwater.
Storm? Which one? Does that affect that agreement?
The changes that were made were in relation to that agreement and the new agreement that was made. So, yes, that's why we're having a new ordinance, so that the Chippewa County has their own, and the municipalities each have their own individual ordinance. That is a reflection of the agreement.
Supervisor Bergeron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Quick question, just going back to, was it the committee? This was mandated by state.
Correct, this was as a result of a DNR audit and the new agreement that we have in place. in place.
Any further discussion? Okay, then we will call the vote. Favor, press green. Those disapprove, press... Yep, release.
Twenty yes, zero no.
Okay. Ordinance 823, again, this is a first reading, and that's to amend Section 2.84, Land Conservation Forest Management Committee. I, this is first reading, so...
Just talk?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Two changes have come for the makeup of the Land Conservation Forest Management Committee. One, previously state code said a member of the Farm Service Agency must be a member of the Land Conservation Committee. In 2021, Farm Service Agency took notice with that, and many committees were left short-staffed under quorum because their members chose not to attend the Land Conservation Committee. In 2023, the state legislature has changed the verbiage from a Farm Service Agency member to one which shall be a person who is engaged in agricultural use as defined under Wisconsin Stat 91.01, Pren 2, Pren A, 1 through 7. Basically, that requirement is what's required to be in the farmland preservation tax credit program, so they're requiring someone from the agricultural community to be on the Land Conservation Committee. The second change is, one of the programs we have in the Land Conservation Office is a community foundation program where landowners can donate funds to go towards a conservation purpose. It has been approved and recommended by the Land Conservation Committee. Previously, the advisory committee was three members of the Land Conservation Committee. We're now requesting it to be the Land Conservation Committee, so not picking just three from the committee, but all five. Or all, all of them, thank you. It's seven, all seven, sorry.
All seven. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, ordinance 923, to amend, this, again, this is first reading, this is men, Section 282.6, application fee for new ATV routes on county highways. The first reading.
This is for the route application fee for the ATV, UTV route approvals. We recently, Highway Committee, have made some changes to the criteria to make it easier, where I can review all the routes from my office, the criteria that are left. I don't need to go out there and physically check site distance, so the amount of time on each review is much less, and so we chose to lower the price for each application from 300 down to $50 to cover our costs.
Okay, any questions? Okay, thanks, Brian. Alrighty, then we will move down to number 10, county administrator appointments. I would make, seek a motion to approve the appointments. Supervisor Hall makes motion, is there a second?
Berg seconds.
Berg seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will call the vote soon as we get, get it up. There we are. Green to approve, red to disapprove. Yep.
Twenty yes, zero no.
Then I would seek a motion to adjourn.
Erickson makes that motion.
Hunt second.
Kerry? That, okay.
Make sure you push your buttons.
You got to push your button, adjourn, otherwise we got to stay. Okay, we're out of here. Thank you, thank you.